Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting for June 28th, 2021. We'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Chambers, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Hilbert. Ms. Pavlik?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Thank you.
We want to welcome everybody out tonight. We have a great group of the community here that's come to the meeting. And I guess this room can accommodate 78 people. We could move to the pack. It'll take us a little bit to move to the pack. By a show of hands, who would rather stay here and conduct the meeting and who would rather go ahead and move to the pack? So stay here, raise your hands. Move to the pack, raise your hands. It's even. All right, well, let's stay here for now. And if we get more people or the fire chief tells us we need to move or our law enforcement, we will do that. But we appreciate you all being here and we hope that we'll all be respectful to one another. We do have rules as we get later to public comment that we will read. But again, if you have interest in commenting publicly, we would request that you find Lisa. And where is Lisa? If you could raise your hand.
Right outside.
Oh, she's outside the door. So we do have a policy that you sign in for making public comment, which will be really at the tail end of the meeting when we do that. So I just want to make you all aware of that, that we have our general business for tonight. This meeting is not singular in purpose. This meeting is our normal business meeting that we have each month. And we have quite a few items that are our routine items that we're going through. But again, we want to welcome you. At this time, we have the minutes. And I hope the Board has had a chance to do that. We did talk about in certain sections, not taking copious notes and doing it more on action items. So there was a question about that, I think, in Board communication. So that's what we're doing there. But it is an accurate minutes of the meeting, as far as I understand. So if any-
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 17th Board meeting and the special meeting held on June 7th.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Skidmore, I just want, I hear what you're saying, but I had, especially based on the upcoming conversations that we're going to have today regarding the protocols. And when I had mentioned about the governor sending out a correspondence or his statewide address and then three days later emailing the superintendents, and that wasn't captured in the minutes. So to me, I think that was a transparency to our community to know that we're, that there's communications going on that they weren't aware of. And I think that they, because of not being aware of that, that is why we got a lot of feedback about the masks and things like that.
Yeah.
I prefer-
Yeah, go ahead.
I prefer that a reference to that would be included.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of information that people say in the Board comments and quite a bit of information that comes in public comments. We do not put the public comments in the minutes. The Board comments, when they're specifically related to an action item, are recorded. And that's, I think, in reviewing the Sunshine laws, that's consistent. I know some Boards only record the votes, no comments whatsoever. So we do go a step above that. So I appreciate Mr. Chambers doing that. And he's adjusted it through the years a couple different ways. But I don't know unless the other Board members feel differently about it, if we approve it the way it is tonight and then move ahead. So if you could call roll, please.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
I'm going to have to abstain.
It's fine.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda presented before you tonight. And first of all, do you have any items that you'd like pulled out to be separated from this list? Any of the Board members tonight? We all good with that?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, any questions or comments? Hearing none, if you could call roll.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Sable?
Good evening, everyone. I appreciated the opportunity to chat with several of you on the way over here as well as on the way in. And I think a lot of the questions that individuals had, at least when I talked to them, may even be addressed here at the beginning of the meeting. My first item to share with the Board is a pandemic update as well as sunsetting of our COVID plan that was put into place before the beginning of this past school year. At the beginning of the school year, it was mandated by the governor that each school district prepare a COVID back-to-school plan. That plan was completed by the district and made public on our website as well as submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. We made that plan in collaboration with our local health department as well as with surrounding school districts. And we didn't all in the county have the same exact plan. They all did vary according to individual needs within districts. But we did work together as this is the first time I know I've been through a pandemic. So it was new to all of us. In last fall, the Board provided me some flexibility in order to be able to make adjustments to our plan throughout the course of the school year, which I think was vitally important to our success in the implementation and the follow-through with that COVID plan. Like I said, it's the first time we've been through this, so there was a learning curve as we moved through the pandemic. We did continue to track our COVID numbers and how they were impacted by the procedures that were in place. And we pretty regularly made adjustments to what we were doing, whether it was students in a hybrid model, whether it was a school transitioning to online learning because of numbers within that building, or whether it was a complete return of students to the school year. Not to rehash too much of the school year, but as we headed into the winter and through the winter, we did see a spike in our COVID cases. And it was at that time that we really tightened up our protocols. That was generally around January. Even at that time, even though we saw an increase in the COVID numbers, we were not seeing transmission within the school district, at least not that we could outright document. Most of the transmission that we were seeing was occurring in the community from community gatherings. I think the holidays had a lot to do with it. We definitely saw a spike following Halloween last year. We also saw a spike following the winter holidays. The good news was is that things started to majorly downtrend as we went through the spring. We continued to look at our plans and make adjustments as necessary. We adjusted our social distancing to a three-foot instead of a six-foot. We also returned all of our students full-time to the high school. The reduction in the social distancing is what allowed us to do that because the problem we were facing at the high school is with the size of the high school, trying to social distance during lunches was quite a challenge. And even with the three-foot distancing, we had to move into other parts of the building in order to make that possible. As we headed towards the end of the school year, we saw almost, if not zero, cases amongst staff in the district. And we went from having five, six, seven, eight, 10 cases of students per day to maybe three, four a week. So it was a pretty dramatic difference. At that time, the governor began lifting COVID protocols effective June 2nd. Because of our low numbers in the district, we followed suit. And on June 2nd, we got rid of our mask mandate and made masks optional for students. At that time, with the information that we had, we did encourage individuals that hadn't been vaccinated or at grade levels where we know they weren't vaccinated to wear masks based off the Health Department's information. We did not require them, though. That was left to as an individual choice per family. Today, in our agenda as a separate voting item, I am happy to be presenting to the Board the complete sunsetting of the back-to-school COVID plan that we implemented last fall and that carried us throughout the course of this school year. Sunsetting of that plan means a normal start to the upcoming school year. I anticipate, and we are currently planning, for full busing to be returned to the district. We did have to remove high school busing in order to be able to social distance on our buses. Our fleet and our amount of drivers just was not large enough. In addition to that, I do not anticipate a mask mandate or social distancing requirements. We'll be working over the course of the summer, and we've already begun conversations amongst our administrative team and reflecting back on the things that were good for our students and our staff and our school district that maybe we want to keep in place that we didn't have in the past. And when I bring that up, it's things like the hand sanitizing stations throughout the buildings. That's something that we see as beneficial, as well as some of the shields in some of the locations, especially with the flu season coming on because we saw a drastic decrease in the flu in the district this past year, as well as masks being optional. What we're not going to do, unless orders come through otherwise, is require students or staff to wear masks or to follow the protocols, which I'm recommending to the Board to sunset this evening. I'm not overly concerned about it in my state meetings and the direction that things are going with COVID. I really can't imagine at this point that we're going to be experiencing another large spike that is going to put us in the difficult decision that we were in last year. With the knowledge that we have over the course of the school year with what worked and with what maybe didn't work, if we were to have to implement anything, I can't say that it would look like the implementation of procedures from the course of this past school year because it's going to be based off of our experiences. What we do not intend to do is, you know, we look at our dress code rules and normally having your face covered would be a violation of the student code of conduct. We do want to be sensitive to children and families and staff members that prefer to continue to wear masks, and we are not going to make them remove those masks unless the mask happens to be a disruption to the learning environment. And the only way we've seen that this past school year is with maybe something inappropriate written on the mask, similar to a student coming in with an inappropriate T-shirt on. So it really was not a big problem. In terms of our federal funding, and you may have read in the paper that we do have approximately $3.5 million of additional federal funding coming in, that federal funding is not reliant upon the implementation of COVID procedures. Those funds were set aside by the federal government, given to states and distributed within states to offset costs that were incurred because of COVID. And some of those costs could be staffing costs, having to hire additional staff in order to do the online schooling and/or to socially distance. It includes the purchasing of plastic shields, which we did spend approximately $20,000 in Plexiglas last year for our students. We were able to cut costs with that because our custodians, our maintenance actually built our dividers rather than purchasing them pre-built. The safety and security of our students is vitally important to us, and that's why we took those kinds of measures. And I wouldn't change the approach that we had taken. We were fortunate to see a low amount of COVID cases. I do account part of that to the procedures that we put into place as well as our flexibility in adjusting those procedures. We were not unscathed by the pandemic. We did have multiple students and staff members that were COVID positive, that were hospitalized. And we even had a staff member that lost their life to COVID as well as their staff or as well as their spouse. So I do ask that people keep that in mind as we do discuss COVID protocols and procedures and what we've done in the past. Today, I'm hoping that this is going to be a step moving forward in regards to the start of our next school year. As I mentioned, the protocols were ended June 2nd, and we followed suit in the district and didn't require the masks for those final days. And we did not, granted, it was a short period of time, but we did not see spikes. I have talked to some of our neighboring districts who's had longer periods of time in school, such as Highland and Brunswick, and they did not see spikes either. And that's one of the reasons why I'm so confident heading into next school year. The pandemic plan, upon approval of the Board, will be removed from our website. We've already begun decreasing the amount of COVID information available on the website, either because it's just not relevant anymore or there's no need to have some of those items in place at this time. And we will further continue to clean up our communications and our website as we move through the summer. It is exciting that, and you see it on the agenda tonight, that it is a sign of things getting back to normal, whether it's field trips that are on the agenda for approval that we weren't seeing last year at this time. I know several of those are actually summer field trips for many of our athletic teams for their off-site camps, some of them overnight, some of them not. In addition, we are planning for our academic year. And I know in saying that and hearing myself say that, it sounds ridiculous. But last year at this time, we were planning so much for COVID that planning for the academic year became such a challenge. And we are back fully in business in terms of our students' academics. Part of that includes our extended summer school programming that we have offered that is currently going on to ensure that our students are at the levels that they need to be heading into next school year, as well as our curricular planning that we're going to hit off heading into the next school year, which includes our new strategic plan, which I'm hoping to present to our Board early in August, as well as our Portrait of a Graduate, which our Board of Education approved, I think, actually at our last regular meeting. So as last school year went on, even though last summer was crazy, we were able to pick the pace back up as we headed back into the school year. And in my opinion, really hit head-on some big district initiatives that are going to help us move forward as a school district. One thing I don't have on here, but I do want to bring up because I know it is a concern of some of the people in attendance tonight, and I'm sure we'll have people talking about this later during our public comment section, that that is critical race theory. The other thing that has come up is the 1619 Project. Both of these things have been around for quite a long time, actually. I think critical race theory actually came into existence in the 70s recently, and I don't know why. I don't know if it's the current climate, whether it's the pandemic, but it has caught a lot of attention recently. I have talked to several of our parents and/or community members, whether it's been through email or through phone calls. We currently do not use the philosophy of critical race theory or the 1619 Project here in Medina City schools. We have no plans to move that direction. In terms of instructionally within the district, we do align our curriculum across our elementary buildings as well as across our high school, and we do have expectations regarding what is being taught within our classrooms. And I'm going to quote one of my principals here who I think put it best. "The curriculum is the paint. It's the tools that our educators need to use in order to instruct our students, and the art of teaching is up to our teachers." So we do have curriculum that we follow. We have curriculum maps within the district. We have state curriculum, which we follow as well. None of those include critical race theory or the 1619 Project. And when we talk about the art of teaching, we're referring to teachers' different approaches to present the material to their students as well as having some flexibility and maybe spending a little extra time while still covering the other required topics to get a little more in-depth in some areas that might be of more interest to our students or in interest to our teachers as well. We do have plans in place to look at equity within the school district. This is a conversation that we've been having for approximately two years now, more in depth. This is something that repeatedly comes up when we talk to our students. We actually had a group of graduating seniors last year who took a really strong role in the development of some equity committees occurring at the high school level so that students can discuss equity not only within the school district but beyond the school district as well. When we're referring to equity, at least when I'm referring to equity, we're not talking about critical race theory. What we're talking about is academic options for our students and ensuring that all students have equal access to the same academics, no matter what building they're attending. In regards to equity within Medina City schools, yes, we're talking about racial equity, but that's really not our main focus here because we just don't have that kind of diversity currently in Medina. So what we're more commonly referring to when we're talking about equity is social economics and the social economic status of our various students and staff and the challenges that they face in regards to receiving their education. I think the easiest example of this in looking at some of our buildings is we have, and you're going to see it from donations tonight, but we have very active PTOs in our district, especially at the elementary levels. And they do a great job fundraising for our students at various buildings. When those PTOs raise funds, those funds specifically go to the buildings of those families. What this can create, and I have seen it in our district, is where some buildings have more opportunities because the PTOs are just more affluent and have a better capacity in order to raise funds. Oftentimes, those kinds of funds go to things like purchasing technology. Many times, it goes to after-school programming. Sometimes, it's offering foreign languages at the elementary levels after school, as well as many other activities and clubs. So when I talk about equity in our district, I want to make sure that our students have equal access to those after-school programs, no matter what building they're attending. We currently don't have specific plans in place on how we're going to address this issue. I do anticipate that we're going to continue to have conversations as we head into this upcoming school year. Those conversations will include participation by our students as well as our parents and community members and is part of our Portrait of a Graduate as well and was a big part of the conversation when we got together with our 50-some-member Portrait of a Graduate Committee that we did want to make sure that all of our students had equal access and equal opportunity. In terms of where the government may go regarding critical race theory, I am a strong believer in the teaching of equity and acceptance. I'm not necessarily think, I do not necessarily think that that should come in the form of critical race theory or the 1619 Project. I think it's the responsibility and should be a local decision in regards to how we are teaching some of those topics based off of the values within our community. And that's one of the reasons why this upcoming year, it's vitally important to have the involvement in our students, staff, and parents as we tackle some of those issues. I would be very hesitant to ever recommend that we move forward with either of those projects or those philosophies. And it's not even due to whether I agree with them or not. It's simply surrounding the amount of energy that is within those two philosophies. If we're going to work together in order to implement some sort of equity programming, it needs to be developed from the ground up so that there's buy-in and there's full participation at all levels. I don't believe in trying to cram a program down anybody's throat, especially when we're a locally operated and supported school district with elected Board members that the community selects. So we do have a responsibility and due diligence to work with our community in order to move forward with some of those topics. Other than that, I don't think I have any further to share. I know I already shared much more than I originally anticipated to, but I was hopeful I could provide some information to the individuals in attendance. The only other piece of information that I think I would share is if people do have concerns, whether it's regarding COVID protocols and procedures or whether it's regarding critical race theory, and I think we said this at our last meeting, but I highly encourage you to reach out to your local legislators because we are hearing from and talking to many parents, but ultimately, many of these decisions are actually being made at the state level. I know currently, critical race theory is being discussed in Ohio amongst the legislators. I think they may have even passed, maybe it was the House. I saw last week had actually passed some legislation in regards to- passed some legislation in regards to critical race theory, and I anticipate that they will continue to have those conversations moving forward. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Sabal, you mentioned the $3.5 million in federal funding. I had some questions presented to me about air conditioning. Is there, can you maybe provide an air conditioning update and like how it's being paid for and with buildings?
Yep, yep. Air conditioning is in the process of being installed within the district. That air conditioning is being paid through part of that $3.5 million that we're receiving from the federal government. We are restricted into how we use those funds. They have to be COVID-related. The government has approved things like air filtration, which includes HVAC systems and air quality systems that those funds can be used for, and that's why we're able to use those funds for the air conditioning projects. That's not, does not mean that it's taking away funds for other things that we could use those COVID dollars on. We actually addressed other needs, including our extended summer school program and academics with students before we even began having the air conditioning conversation. We are taking a conservative approach towards the air conditioning in order to have a cost savings because we are going to be reinitiating our redistricting meetings and projects over the course of this upcoming school year. And two of the buildings which are in need of air conditioning, Claggett and FEN, have very high costs in order to put air conditioning and upgraded HVAC systems into those two buildings. So what we're doing with those two buildings is we're upgrading the electrical within the buildings so that they can handle window units, which currently they can't. It would blow the fuse. And I think that's actually in process right now at FEN, and we do anticipate that those projects will be completed prior to the beginning of the school year. I did get a few questions actually today about whether there would be adjustments to the start of the school year. I do not see that happening. Much of that had to do last year with preparing with the COVID protocols as well as the requirement for students to wear masks with the temperatures. Masks shouldn't be an issue. Air conditioning shouldn't be an issue as well because our contractors are telling us that it will be ready to go. In terms of FEN, it's going to be a setup very much like or exactly like what we have at Garfield. So we have, if we have any Garfield parents here tonight, we do have window units in all of the classrooms, which, as well as the offices, which does a pretty nice job in keeping the building cool and fresh air coming in. At Claggett, we're purchasing much larger air conditioning units for each of the rooms because of the size of the building, and and those units are similar to industrial units that we had rented in the past and implemented into many of the classrooms over there at Claggett. Now, in the event that either of those buildings are replaced or centralized air is determined to be put into those buildings as an upgrade, we do have the opportunity to resell those portable units. So even though we're using federal dollars, we're trying to be responsible in how we're doing that so we can continue to allocate some of those funds to other areas. The one building where we are doing a complete implementation of the HVAC air is over at Canavan, and the reason why is because the skeleton is already there in order to do that. And that has a lot to do with the new section of the building that was added years ago, which does currently have centralized air. So we're going to be expanding the air that is currently in half of that building to the entire building. The other piece to that is based off of the studies that the state came in and the architects did for us regarding our facilities. I really do not anticipate anything happening in terms of Canavan in regards to replacement of the building. We'll see if there ends up being any upgrades there to the older half, but I don't foresee it being a building tagged as potential replacement. And I know I'm trailing off into another topic I don't have on here, but I just wanted to mention while I'm talking about facilities, is we really don't have any set plans in terms of what's happening with our facilities. We do know that we do need to do redistricting at the elementary level due to changes in enrollment at the elementary buildings. We have some buildings at a very low enrollment right now, while others are reaching capacity. So we need to find a way to even that out, and that process may or may not include upgrading of facilities or replacement of facilities. That's something that we're going to work through with our community. I have no intention of recommending a bond issue to our our board that our community is not a part of, in the development of, or supportive of. So it is the possibility, again, that we could be making those redistricting adjustments without doing anything with facilities. We are also continuing to work with the OFCC, which we began that process last year. The OFCC is the Ohio Facilities Construction Council Commission, I always say that wrong, Commission. Those are state dollars, or they're actually federal dollars that were set aside through the tobacco, big tobacco lawsuits that occurred long ago that in Ohio were made available to districts on a needs basis to help fund the replacement and the upgrading of facilities. So we are continuing to work with them to get any kind of funding we can if it's to the benefit of our district. But the first thing we need to do is come back to to our community and see if these are initiatives that the community is supportive of because I do recognize that going through a pandemic and the difficult year and a half that we've had, that that could change perspectives in terms of what needs to be done or what doesn't need to be done in terms of district facilities. No matter what happens, we're going to continue to maintain our current facilities. We do have a facilities committee, which includes myself, John Burkhardt, our director of business affairs, as well as community members, as well as two of our board members, and I think it's Mr. Skidmore and Ms. Pavlik that serve on those committees, and we're actually meeting Thursday of this week. And we regularly review our facilities to have discussions about how to appropriately spend our funds in order to maintain our of our our facilities. So when you see things like roofing projects, and I'm sure you all noticed the, all the roofing materials out in the back of the building when you pulled in, that's for the whole district. They set it up in a central centralized location here. But those replacements weren't just randomly selected. Those were based off of our committee discussions as well as recommendations from outside professionals in making those decisions. Any other questions for me from the board?
I'm going to try and be brief. Yes, the district bank balance decreased 2.33 million in May to 75.142 million. This is $3.5 million below last year at this time. General fund revenues were above last May by $720,000. The combination of real property taxes, personal property taxes, and property tax allocation funding accounted for this increase. General fund expenditures were above last May by $1.35 million. Personnel benefits, purchase services, supplies, and other funding contributed to this increase. The sales tax fund balance is down to $3.5 million. The district spent approximately $456,000 in May with the majority of expenditures on our COPS bonds interest and summer paving and our Fleet Master lease. The recreation center capital fund balance is down to $235,000. The district spent roughly $12,300 on playgrounds and bleacher seats, and we received a donation of $2,500. The district has received $50,600 in investment income for May. The total collected for the current year is approximately $713,000 below last year at this time, and this is the lowest since 2015, or 2017 fiscal year. The district has a general fund two days cash estimate to be approximately 232 days. This is down from April by 6.3 days, or 6.03 days, and below last year by 25.32 days.
Questions on financial?
Mr. Chambers, I just have a quick question. In number one and two, I'm sorry, two and three, it says above last April, should that be last May?
Yes, I threw May in there. I'm sorry what I gave to the board earlier. It was, it was, I'm still working.
I apologize. Yeah, I didn't catch that before.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers, for that report. Now it's board communications.
No, I'd like to talk to you about our final appropriations and what else we have here for you.
Sorry.
Okay, the final appropriations, we have a number of variances from our May appropriations to our June appropriations, first being in our permanent improvement. That is due to the REC Center with funding that they needed here to complete services for the fiscal year. We went up $23,000. Our food service, we dropped $214,000 for the purpose that they did not spend that money here, and I know for a fact because we're a 228th, but last year we didn't know that. Last year, I think our board meeting was about a week, maybe two weeks earlier. So this, this is good for our food service department, plus I think it's the first time our food service department ended in the black in five years, six years since I've been here. We have $58,000 being reduced off our uniform school supply. The uniform school supply is our fees that are paid by our parents, and being that the year was was determined by COVID that there was not as much spent out of that account. You had our emergency levy up by $2.2 million. This is because all of our new hires have been placed into the emergency levy. So over the year, the 2.2 represents any new hire we had, any new programming we had coming out this year. Let's see, our employee benefits went up by $1.4 million. Being that we're self-serve or self-insured, the $1.4 million will take us through the final, and if you read the audit, you'll know that this was one of the items that was in there, so we're happy that, to put that up where it belongs. And then our workers' compensation is up $15,000 for the same purpose. We have nearly $300,000 being reduced from our district managed activity. That includes our athletic funds, which actually helps out our athletic funds. Their balances are below $100,000 at this time. And finally, we have $39,600 that was being added to our K-12 network fund. We received money from the state for K-12, and it was not appropriated until the end of this year. Those are all the changes. Okay, on the agenda, you will also find fund-to-fund transfers. These fund-to-fund transfers close out the year for a lot of these accounts. General fund only has one transfer going out, $9,000 for STAR. The rest are transfers that are from accounts that are being closed out at Root, and then you also have our sales fund transfer to bond retirements for COPS. We have a return of advance. That's from our food service fund. This is returning advanced monies that you gave to them last year at this time, so they're returning it to us, but you'll notice that we are then going to advance funds to the food service fund, and the only reason is because, again, they were behind by $450,000. Now they're only behind by $270,000. And the rest of the advances are going to our federal funds because we cannot end the federal funds in the red. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. I'm that guy that claps early at the orchestra concerts, so I apologize for that. So on to board communications, and I'll just lead it off, and then you all can chime in too. Unfortunately, we do have a resignation of Mr. Hilberg tonight that we'll be approving as a board, and we appreciate Mr. Hilberg's service the last several years, who ran for the seat of of Mr. Eastwood when Mr. Eastwood went off the board. So we appreciate Mr. Hilberg and all his work, and his new restaurant is doing so well that it's taking a lot of his time and other things, so we will miss him on the board. There'll be a press release going out from Mrs. Busby tonight, and it's my understanding we're looking at if this works for the board July 13th and July 15th potentially to conduct interviews in the evening, and I would imagine we'll do those here. There'll be an online application that can be completed from those who are interested in running for that position. If you are applying, I should say, if you are interested in applying and running for that position, I recommend you talk to the Board of Elections and discover, it's my understanding that that position will be voted on again this fall in a special election for that position, as well as three board positions. So there literally could be potentially four different board members, January 1st, 2022. there's three this fall that are up. Ms. Pavlik, my position, and Mrs. Parker's. Yes. Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's coming out tonight, that July 13th and July 15th dates. And again, if if the public has interest in applying, and there's a few criteria, being over 18, being in our district and that sort of thing, that'll all be there. But again, we appreciate Mr. Hilberg. He's been a great board member for us, and he also served at the Career Center, and I don't know if a lot of people know that, but he's been serving out there the last year and a half, I believe, or almost two years, and Brian has has been a great resource for us, and so we are going to miss him and miss his work he's done for us. So those are my communications. I'll pass the mic.
I just want to echo that, Mr. Hilberg, great. I appreciate Brian stepping up and serving. He's a great asset to us, and I wish him well with his business. Thank you.
Policy committee met a couple weeks ago, curriculum committee met a couple weeks ago, and in fact, in curriculum, one of the items we talked about is approval of a book that will, is on the agenda for this evening for one of our classes at the high school level. And I just really wanted to take a moment to, as we're wrapping up the year end, I know Mr. Sabal has said multiple times how this was his first pandemic, and it was all of our first, it was the first pandemic for all of us. So I do want to thank our staff and our students, our parents. We asked a lot of everyone, and things were changing. It was very fluid, and we were asking for a lot of flexibility, and we do appreciate everyone being flexible and doing what needed to be done to get us through this this year. It was a success. By the time spring came around, you know, we had sports, you know, our sports teams were making it to state tournaments, and we had music and theater productions. We had our high school graduation out here at our stadium, which was fantastic to have it right here in our backyard. Prom was here, so there were a lot of great things seeing us get back to normal. I'm really excited for the fall to continue to look even more normal with the start of the school year. And also, along with that, as Mr. Sabal said, we put a lot of things on hold academically so that we could focus on what we need to do for the pandemic, and now we're able to get back to focusing on our academics and on our implementing our Portrait of a Graduate, our new strategic plan, things that had been on hold. I remember, I think we had a, there was a March, I think it was a teaming meeting at Root that was supposed, that was scheduled to talk about teaming for the middle school that had to be canceled because that was when the governor, you know, started to shut everything down. So it's, it's great to see those things going to be implemented and and starting those back up. They're no longer on pause. So it's a really exciting time for the district. I think we need to really focus on that, how exciting it is, and we've got a lot of great things to look forward to. And the other thing I wanted to mention is And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I know since Mr. Skidmore has been on the board, he has always focused on how important it is to be transparent, for our board to be transparent, and I feel that we have done that. I want to thank Mr. Sable for always communicating what is going on and always answering questions and being available to our community and to the board members whenever we had questions, and it is a really exciting time for our district. I just thank everyone for all of their, their hard work. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to add a couple of things with the curriculum committee and the book that is up, the proposed book. The teacher, and I really liked this as the committee was working through this, that the teacher had submitted a justification document that included the instructional rationale about why they were choosing this particular book. So we had a conversation about that, that moving forward to perhaps look at making this the, the formal procedure to when a teacher wants to submit a book that ultimately has to come through for the board to approve. But again, it gets reviewed by the curriculum committee, which includes parents who sit on that committee, and it's open to any parent who is interested in sitting on that committee. And just to remind the community that the approval required, the billie approval, it is required by Ohio Revised Code, which went into effect on September 17th, 2014, and that's Ohio Revised Code 3313.21. And I'm just going to put myself out on a limb here because we always tell our students that to stand up for themselves, and if they see something that they feel is wrong, that they should say something. And I just want to touch base once again because board communications and the minutes notes that were captured, I looked back, and it's not under action items. It is strictly communication. It references the policy committee, the curriculum committee, facilities committee. Mr. Ross stated, "It's refreshing to see the number of people involved in the Portrait of a Graduate." I mentioned about the cooking class return as a course option. But again, so all these things are not related to action items, but yet they were captured by the minutes, and I feel that my comments that I had made about the correspondence that had been received by all the superintendents in the state, by the governor, was not included. So again, I just wanted to, as we encourage our students to always say something and to stick up for themselves, I just felt I wanted to add that. Thank you.
We appreciate all of your comments, Valerie, and you are very insightful. We appreciate that. That, if, if the board wants to talk about that at a work session, I'd suggest that we do that. I, I don't think we need to rehash it again tonight. We already voted on it. We already took our action, so.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes.
I'm sorry, there's one thing I did want to forget. I forgot that I wanted to mention real quick. When Mr. Sable had mentioned about reaching out to your local legislators about issues, one thing I did want to mention was our state school funding plan, which the House had bipartisan support last year. It took them three years to come up with a plan that was very equitable, that most of the districts in the whole state supported. That is now in the Senate, it's kind of been redone, and they're supposed to vote on that as part of the budget this week. I do encourage you to reach out to your local senator and your local rep to let them know what you think about that, because it has changed dramatically. And maybe you've seen the headlines in the paper that the 25 richest districts are going to get most of the money, and the 25 poorest are going to get the least amount of money. So that's something that will affect our district, so I do encourage you to reach out to your legislators down there in Columbus. Thanks. Quickly, because they are voting on it soon. The budget takes place July, in July. Thank you.
And that reminds me, we need to reappoint our legislative liaison because Mr. Hilberg had taken that position in January. So unless somebody wants to volunteer for that tonight, I would suggest that we wait until we appoint the new member in July, although I appreciate us keeping up on that, Becky and others that are, that are watching. And I know our superintendent and treasurer get information from the Superintendent Association and OASBO and the Network for High Achieving, whatever the name of that group is, the, that we're, the alliance that we're in, so, and, and I know they keep track of it as well. But that legislation is, is a fast-moving topic, and some things get added at the last minute, and it's a lot of work to, to keep on that. That's a full-time job for somebody, so thank you. And so now, we will move on. If we're all set with that item, we'll move on to our action items. Our treasurer?
Yes, if it please the board, it's item number one, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the May 21st treasurer's report. Item number two, fund-to-fund, fund-to-fund transfers. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following fund-to-fund transfers. Got the transfer from the general fund to STAR, transfers from Root, Washington trip to Root District Supervised Activities, also to the principal fund at Root. We have a special fundraiser at Root going to the principal fund at Root, our sales tax fund to the bond retirement fund, and cheerleaders at Root going to the principal fund. Item three, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the following advance, or return of advance, the food service fund to the general fund itself. Then item number four, we have advances of funds. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following advances of funds. General fund to all of the following: food service, ESRS II, Title VI, Title I, Title I D, preschool, and we have our 590 and 599, which are miscellaneous. And finally, we have our final appropriations. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the final appropriations for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Do we have a motion to accept action items one through five?
I make a motion to accept treasurer's action items, one through five.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavlik.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Parkers. Any questions or comments from the board? Any or questions or comments from the public regarding action items F1 through 5? Hearing none, if you could please call roll.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Ms. Parkers?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Sable?
First item up tonight is donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following donations to the Medina City Schools. I do want to point out several here, which are PTO donations of $2,400 to Canvin, $2,500 to Heritage, $2,000 to Blake, and then another 500 for Ella Canvin, and, and these are for all extended schooling programs, virtual field trips, helping to fund the refurbishing of the pods over at Blake. Number two, it is recommended that the Board of Education accept the list of seniors of the class of 2021 who have fulfilled all the requirements for the State of Ohio and the Medina City Schools for graduation. So I know we had our graduation quite a while ago already, but it's the boards tonight that actually makes them official graduates, so it's a big night. Number three is a transportation resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the transportation resolution, which deems students from non-public schools and students living outside the non-public school attendance area as ineligible for transportation for the 2122 school year. And that is a routine item that has nothing to do with the pandemic or reduction in anything. Number four is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following service agreements for the summer of '21 and the 2122 school year. So all of these are special education contracts. These are contracts that we have been in, in the past, and are dependent upon individual students' IEP needs. Number five, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Medina City School District and Red Rover Technologies to provide absence management and substitute placement services for July 1st, '21 through June 30th, '22, for approximately $10,400 with three reoccurring subscription years and a one-time customer implementation training fee of $500 for the first year. And I do want to acknowledge that our treasurer's office, as well as our human resources office, has put many man-hours into the selection of this software. What this software does is it manages our substitutes in our buildings. With a district our size, it's not as simple as a principal or a teacher calling a principal, and then the principal finding a substitute, which is actually the way it was done when I taught 20-some years ago. There is an online system for teachers to implement their absences and for an online system for substitutes to put in for open positions. We do have a substitute shortage. We've had that before the pandemic. It's only gotten worse during the pandemic, and this software keeps us competitive with other districts in terms of assigning substitutes. We were previously using a piece of software that I believe was developed by the state. Was it back in the 1800s? That software is going out of existence, so we need to find a piece of software to replace that. Number seven is agreements with suburban school transportation. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Medina City School District and Suburban School Transportation Company to provide transportation for specific Medina City School District students during the 2122 school year. This is also a routine item, and this is also based off of the individual requirements of special educational students that need special transportation. Number eight, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the City of Medina and Medina City Schools for the Technical Operations Director shared position. This is a position that has been shared between the city, as well as the school district, for many years. I think this was actually brought up and discussed at our joint meeting a month ago. We had contacted the city about expanding this position to provide more services for the school district, and those services include work over at the PAC, the Performing Arts Center. We do anticipate that events will be returning this summer and heading into the next school year, and we're going to need personnel in order to operate that facility to ensure that those things can happen, and those vary from school events, such as a choir or band show, all the way to rental of the facility by outside organizations. Number nine is field trips, and it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight field trips in compliance with Policy 2340 for the summer of '21 and the 2122 school year. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we have our eighth grade trip on here for Root, as, as well as the marching band to Disney World, and the boys soccer team for a camping trip in July. So it's nice to see these on the agenda. Number 10, it is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following book for public preview with the intent to recommend for adoption and addition to the secondary book list in July following the preview period. So this will be recommended for official adoption to the board at our next regular meeting. The book is available for community review if they choose to. Until then, if you are interested in reviewing the book, I would ask that you reach out to our Department of Instruction, and they will ensure that you get a copy for review. Number 11 is a memorandum of understanding with colleges and universities. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Medina City School District and the following colleges and universities: Cuyahoga Community College, Kent State University, Lorain County Community College, University of Akron, the University of Toledo, and the College Credit Plus Program. This is also a yearly routine item. This has to do with college credits, plus the ability of our high school students to take college courses. These college courses are charged back to the district, so what these MOUs do is they set prices, so it's not just open game on charging for the enrollment of those students in college classes. Number 12, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the Medina City School District and the Medina County Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board, which is the ADAM Board, to provide grant funds to the Medina City Schools in the amount of $6,000 to operate the drug testing program for the period of July 1st, '21 through June 30th, '22. These are funds that the ADAM Board has offered us for at least the past five years since I've been here in order to do drug testing for student athletes. I believe that program has been in place for approximately six years. I am happy to see that they are willing to continue to donate funds towards the operation of that program. I know the ADAM Board also supports other local districts in that initiative as well. Number 13, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the change of contract and one rental fee increase for the Medina City Schools facility rental program. Mr. Burkhardt did review our rental fees and compared them to surrounding districts. We are looking at the, a slight increase to one of the fees for use of classroom increased by $1 from $14 to $15. In addition to that, we also wanted to adjust athletic rentals and rentals of athletic facilities to go through our business department as opposed to our athletic director. It is my feeling that it's more appropriate for these to be reviewed through our, at a district level, through our business director, as opposed to our athletic director, who obviously has a good view of what's happening within athletics, but may not know other activities and potential rentals that might be coming to the district. Number 14, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the commercial insurance proposal between the Medina City School District and Todd Associations for the 2122 school year, and this insurance is also a routine item that's recommended on a yearly basis. I know Mr. Burkhardt, when this does come up, does review with competing companies to see what kind of coverage and offerings we can get, and we do balance the recommendation on not only what the best cost is, but what's going to be the ideal coverage for our district. And number 15 is personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel recommendations pending completion of all required paperwork per the human resources office. We do have several hires on the agenda tonight, which is pretty typical for this time of year. The majority of these are replacing retired personnel. We do have, I believe, a couple of these that are relevant to the implementation of teaming at our two middle schools. In addition, we have returning support staff substitutes and also athletic workers, and I'm happy to see long lists for both of these. I'd actually like to see our classified substitute list get even longer, because this is an area that we sometimes have a hard time finding coverage. Included in terms of athletic workers, these are individuals that work for our athletic department in making sure that our athletics proceed smoothly. An example of this would be a ticket taker at a football game. We also have two retirements on the agenda this evening, and I would like to invite our presenting administrators to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here, and it's great to be back in the board meetings, but tonight I'm here to recognize one of Canvin's staff members. I'm here to recognize Lisa Worley, who is retiring from our media center. She is a media paraprofessional at Canvin. Lisa is retiring with 20... Lisa is retiring with 27 years of service to Medina City Schools. She started actually at Canavan Elementary as a Title I tutor, and then moved to Fenn as an instructional paraprofessional, then went to Heritage, and finally, for the last 11 years, has been back at Canavan. Lisa has been instrumental at the media center in bringing back and bringing in the Makerspace activities. She was very instrumental in getting those into the hands of our students, getting those into the hands of teachers, then to incorporate into the classrooms. But the one accomplishment that I will truly credit Lisa with is every summer, except for the past two, is we have opened up our media center to the Canavan community in the months of June and August. We've opened it up to allow our students to come in, to allow our families to come in, to check out books, to do activities, to get treats, and that was all Lisa's initiative. Something that I hope we will continue even in her retirement. But it was because of her, we felt that our school is part of the Canavan community, and our doors need to be open during the summer. So through her initiative, through her drive, she worked with PTO to acquire funds, to fund the activities, to fund the themes that our media center sponsored every year. So it is something that, you know, we plan to continue, and she will be greatly missed as she has truly been an asset to our building. But Lisa will stay connected. You will see her working in various athletic events, and she also has two daughter-in-laws that also teach in the district. So while she is retiring, she will still be greatly involved with our district. So thank you to Lisa for her many years of service to our district.
And one of her daughter-in-laws works at Heritage, and she told me that she would be volunteering at Heritage when we have volunteers back. So thank you, Mr. Condon. I'm Shannon Federinko, the principal at Heritage Elementary, and I want to thank Mr. Sable and the board again for allowing us to present our retirees because it is such an honor to serve in our district, and so to recognize them is really our pleasure. And thanks also to Jim Shields, who always helps us get the history on everyone who's been here forever. So I have the pleasure of talking about Betty Miller, one of our Heritage third-grade teachers. She's retiring on September 1st this year with 18 years of service to the Medina City Schools and 25 overall years in education. Betty taught for five years at a Lutheran school and then started subbing for Medina City Schools before getting hired in 2003. And she was originally hired to teach second grade at Heritage, but that summer she was hired, she ended up switching to first grade. So during her time with our district, Betty has primarily taught first and third grade at Heritage, and she did do a one-year stint at HG Blake in first grade. At Heritage Elementary, Betty has always done what's best for students. She has handled a lot of difficult situations with parents and students beautifully. She's a really calm person with a strong ability to build rapport with students and parents. And I tell her often, because our teachers copy us on their communications, that I just want to save her emails and make them exemplars for new teachers or other teachers because she's such a great communicator, and she always makes people feel, parents feel, like their child is the best child on the planet. And that's one of my favorite things about Betty. She's very good with our students who have behavioral and emotional challenges, and I always knew if I put a student in her classroom that they would come out successful, and they always did. And then, as a district, we've implemented our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, known as PBIS, and Betty has been an integral part of that process by serving on our team since we began. She's one of the hardest teachers I've ever met in my 25 years in education. She stays late every night, of course, to make sure everything's ready for her students. And she also was the co-lead on our Veterans Correspondence Leadership Team, helping students to understand the importance of sharing their gift and making their mark with our veterans. This is interesting. She's a lifelong resident of Medina and a proud graduate of Medina High School, and her sister also taught for Medina City Schools. I did not know that until Jim Shields gave me that information. So Betty looks forward to spending more time with her mom, who still lives in Medina, and traveling in the fall with her husband Russ, who's been retired a couple years. So they have two children who are their greatest pride, who also graduated from Medina City Schools, Caroline and Alan, and Caroline's getting married in the fall. So Betty has a lot to look forward to. We want to thank her for her years of teaching and wish her all the best in retirement. At Heritage, our guiding mantra is share your gift, make your mark, and Betty has done that and then some with our students, our staff, and our parents, and we're going to miss her bright smile and positive attitude. So thank you for letting me share with you about Betty Miller, and congratulations to Betty and her family.
And thank you, Mr. Condon, as well as Ms. Federinko, for those presentations this evening. And that is my last item. If there's any questions from the board.
All right. We're gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we deal with this action item G. 1 through 15. I'm gonna suggest afterwards, we're gonna recess, then we'll do the two additional action items, and then we'll do the public comment. Okay? So I would entertain a motion to accept item G. 1 through 15.
Second?
You're first.
Ron, you made the motion. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavlik. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Skidmore, I just have two questions. On number eight, the Technical Operations Director, I see where they're splitting the time, 40 hours for the city, 40 hours for the district. The district's paying for the salary, and the city is paying for the benefits, and I'm just curious how much the benefits total.
Yeah, and I don't have an exact figure because the benefits are a little bit different from the city, but a guesstimate on the benefits is somewhere around $35,000. And it is more than the salary, but even the work that is done for the city is for the district, if that makes sense. For instance, this is why we have our concerts on the public access television, and so that's where the lines kind of blur between the city and the district.
I just want to...
So it says the city's responsible for health insurance, PERS. The agreement I'm looking at says that. But then the school district's responsible for salary associated with the position.
So...
So it might be reversed maybe from what you stated, but it's the same concept, I think.
I think so.
But yeah, this was something that the district negotiated with the city. And again, at our last work session that we had with the city, we, and I know Mr. Ross, you were a big part of that partnership too, and just we celebrated a lot of the positives there and the shared resources that we have in certain departments, so then we can get more done, you know, that way and so forth. But do we need to separate that out? Are you okay with that? Or...
Well, I'm just curious because typically, benefits are more like 30% of the salaries. So that's why I was just, I mean, you never pay the same amount for benefits as you...
Yeah, it's in that. That third paragraph says the city will be responsible for all benefits for the new position.
But it doesn't give it an approximate cost. And that's what I was looking for.
Well, and it probably changes, but...
Just like the salary would change?
Yeah.
So I think moving forward in something like this, I think it, just again, being transparent, I think it should at least have an approximate idea of how much is falling on the district and how much is falling on the city.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And then my second question, item number 12, memorandum of understanding. I noticed that the attachments were in the administrative content. Should they be in public content? Because it...
Yes.
Okay.
They should be.
Can we get that moved?
So if Dr. Qualek could do that. I know there was another one that we got. I'm sorry?
The attachment is board policy, so it's public content in general, but I'll move it there, so it's there as well.
Thank you.
And also to answer your question, this is how fast our administrative team works. The benefits is $42,000 for that position.
Thank you. All right. Who's that? That's Mr. Shields, isn't it?
All right. I actually got it from multiple of our administrators.
All right. So we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments on these action items?
Mr. Skidmore, I just wanted to thank Mr. Condon for his, talking about Mrs. Worley. I had the honor and privilege to help her and to volunteer in the media center for several years, and she was always great about giving me great book recommendations, not only for myself but for the kids, any age. She always has a great book recommendation, and I know that she will be missed, so I wish her all the best in her retirement. And Mr. Chambers, I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Chambers or Mr. Sable, but with the CCP agreements, I know the state has said that those are free tuition for our kids. It's not free. The district pays for that. Do we get any kind of reimbursement or anything from the state for those classes?
No, we do not. No.
I didn't think so, but thank you.
Yes.
That's an unfunded mandate, right? Okay.
And I apologize. One more question. The field trips, Root, eighth grade, to DC, and I just wanted to make sure, because is that because in, Root did not get to go in 2021 things? Because isn't it typically Claggett goes in the fall, Root goes in the spring, and so Claggett got their trip in the fall, but Root got KOed?
No, we actually, all of our eighth graders go each year, so a recommendation for the Claggett trip will be coming through here soon.
Thank you.
Okay. So if the board's good with this, any questions or comments from the public relating to items 1 through 15 of G? We'll pause for a couple seconds here. All right. If you could please state your name.
Erin Wertz. Just a question on item number 10. Just wanted on public record what the name of the book was that was being brought...
Yes, sir. It's in the agenda, and we'll be happy to tell you.
Could you read it on public record, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Media and Mass Communication, grades 10 to 12, ELA elective title. An absolutely remarkable thing. Author Hank Green. Approved for whole class instruction pending. And if, for those following along, if you go to medinabees.org, you click on Board of Education, and you click on Board Docs, and then you can click on Meetings, and then it would have tonight's meeting. You can follow along with our agenda, and all the attachments are there and so forth. But thank you for that question. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye. We'll take a five-minute recess if we could and then come back on. All right. Good evening. That's all right. We're gonna, we're gonna get back on the record tonight. And at 7:32, we're back on the record. We have action item H. Do you want to indicate what that is?
Action item H, resolution to sunset COVID protocols. It is recommended that the Board of Education sunset the Medina City Schools' return-to-school plan and all COVID protocols, including those referred to in policy 8450.01, effective June 30th, 2021. The district will still follow required state law.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve action item H.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. I'll second that. Do we have any questions or comments from the board regarding the sunset?
Mr. Skidmore, I just have one quick question. When we retire a policy like this, is there somewhere on the document that states retired, expired?
That's a good question. That would be one for Dr. Qualek. My guess is that it just goes away effective June 30th from our policies, but that might be wrong.
Yep. So we'll note, we'll send it to Board Docs. Lisa will note that it's...
Lisa will note that it's retired's not the right word. It's been deleted, so it'll be noted as a deleted policy in our policy history.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Sable, I just wanted to make sure that for our students that are immunocompromised or students that aren't able to get the vaccine, that we still will have safeguards in place to protect all of our, all of our students.
Absolutely. As we've done throughout the pandemic, we're making adjustments based off of the information that we have in regards to what's happening with COVID within the school district, as well as within the community. So the safety of our students and staff is always a priority.
And, you know, we approved this, was it last August 20th, I think? Around that time when we approved it. And the goal of the district in approving it at the time was to get kids back in school. And that was it. We didn't want to have kids remote forever. And we were able to accomplish that this year. So thank goodness, you know, through the efforts of the district and others, we were able to get students back in the schools. I mean, some districts didn't have school across the United States this past school year. So, so we appreciate that. It was an emergency thing that was done at the time. I think none of us were happy that we had to do it at the time, but we did it then. And I think we're really happy today to be able to undo it. So that's a great thing. So those are my comments. Any others from the board? Hearing none, if there's any questions or comments from the public regarding just this item H1. Hearing none, if we could please call roll.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Thank you.
And again, the next one is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Sable.
And the last action item for this evening. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Board Member Mr. Brian Hilberg, effective June 27, 2021. And I just want to reiterate what Mr. Skidmore had said earlier. That a press release is going to go out following this meeting. And that will include information on accessing the online application for the board's review.
Okay. I'll move we accept.
Make a motion to accept action item I.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just want to say that I will definitely miss what Mr. Hilberg brought to the table, for sure.
Agreed. Any other questions or comments? Hearing, any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and probably what a lot of you are here for, we have public participation time. And I'm going to read you some rules for this, and then we have a batting order here of who's signed in. So we'll have you come to the podium at that point. Community members wishing to address the board are asked to abide by the following guidelines. Attendees shall register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon arrival at the meeting. After those that have registered have spoken. If time allows, the Board President will ask for public participation from other attendees. Please state your name, address, and affiliation. Please keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question Board members individually. And tonight, we have down Sharon Yorke, who is our first speaker.
Hello.
Good evening.
First, I would like to thank you for hosting this meeting and allowing us all to attend and allowing us to step up here and be heard. None of us really, we have a lot of concerns over what our children are being taught, and we don't know how closely related you are to the government and how much you actually have a voice in implementing what you are going to teach the children or how much the government is involved. You, Mr. Sable, had commented about the critical race theory, that you had no plans of implementing that, but you didn't say that you agree with it or disagree with it, and if those plans could change at any given time. You know, back in my day when we went to, when we went to school as individuals, we were encouraged to think for ourselves, reach for the stars, and follow our God-given goals and dreams, and that nothing was impossible if you set your mind to it and are willing to work for it. Now it appears our children are being taught that rioting and violence is okay, and if it's done, if it's done for the right reasons. And if you wake up in the morning and decide you want to be a member of the opposite sex, that's okay too. And if that, you were born black, you were somehow disadvantaged and cheated in life, and that other people owe you something because you were held back. Well, I guess no one told Denzel, Morgan, Aretha, Lionel, Whitney, Shaq, LeBron, Tiger, Michael Jordan, Jackson, Ben Carson, and not to mention, and I really hate to mention, Barack, Oprah, and Whoopi, and Ray Charles and Stevie Wonder, who were black and blind, and they both succeeded. So, you know, I don't know how much the government does have a say-so, but it does concern us with what's going on. And, you know, I, you know, do you actually, and I'm not, you know, asking the question, but do you actually have a choice? Or are you caught up in some world wide web that already has an agenda of what they're trying to teach our children? And, you know, I feel that it's, you know, they are manipulating and brainwashing our children in hopes of creating a misguided, angry, confused, and frightened generation who are being lied to and bullied. They're being bullied into compliance. And the worthless masks that are still being pushed in many places are nothing more than a statement to show the world that they have no identity or a voice. And I won't even get started on the, so I'll wrap this up, and I mean no disrespect. But do you have a voice? Or are you caught up in this system? And if you are somehow caught up in this world wide web and know that it's wrong, I pray that you find a way and the courage to get out. And if for some reason you think that all of what is happening in our government and school system is okay, I pray in the name of Jesus that the veil of deception is lifted from your eyes. Either way, if you continue down a path that you know is wrong, those who do that will answer to God himself, and I wouldn't wish that on anyone.
Time, thank you. Kelsey Stalarsky. Kelsey Stalarsky, next.
Hello. My name is Dr. Kelsey Stalarsky. I was born and raised in Ohio and spent the majority of my educational career in the Medina City Public School System. I love our community and I'm grateful for my experience as a child, teenager, and now professional adult in this city. I understand the complexity of navigating the 2020-2021 school year. I would like to believe that decisions made reflected what you felt were in the best interests of the students, teachers, and families. You have stated here tonight that mask restrictions have been lifted unless a mandate was reinstated. This information applies, the information I'm going to present to you applies to a resurgence in the fall, as you have implied that your plan was fluid. I want to make it very clear that masking the children for COVID was extremely dangerous because, as a reminder, children and young adults have over a 99% chance of survival. You may find that statistic used exhaustively. Maybe this time it will sink in that this virus is not affecting our students at rates you are being pressured to think. In addition, the highly esteemed N95 masks shield particles with an average size of 300 nanometers. Do you know the size of the SARS-CoV-2 particle? 80 to 120 nanometers. N95 masks do not offer significant protection from infection. The cloth and hospital masks offer even less support with devastating consequences. According to OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, the optimal range of oxygen in the air for humans is between 19.5% to 23.5%. OSHA has determined that any oxygen range less than 19.5% is unsafe for workers. Within seconds of wearing a mask, a percentage of oxygen inside of a mask measures 17.4%, which is significantly below the safe oxygen range. Forcing students to wear masks is damaging to their physiological well-being. It does not take a physician to understand data. It does not take skill to understand the facts. The simple fact is that you were damaging our children with no scientific reasoning. You must consider the social, physical, mental, academic, and civil ramifications of masking our children, whether it be in the past or the future. I was once asked to write a paper in my sophomore year history class at Medina High if I thought history repeated itself. I remember defending that, yes, I did believe that history repeated itself, and it was only wise to reflect on the past to benefit the future. Flash forward to my sophomore year Judaism and Christianity class in college, and I was reminded of the propaganda that was used to promote mass hatred of the Jews during World War II. They were identified with stars and separated from society. While we are fortunately not yet experiencing mass extermination and discrimination of a certain people group like that time in history, we are bombarded by segregation based on personal medical choices, and the brandings used are masks and vaccine cards, all in the name of control and fear. The Medina City School Board, I urge you to not fall prey to the divisive and evil agenda to separate and control children and students based on personal health choices. These choices should be made by individuals and families again, now, and into the future. We, the people, parents, alumni, and doctors, demand that you let our students breathe and allow their families to make their own health decisions.
Thank you.
Decisions that you have no legal bounds to make.
Thank you. Heather Stafford.
Good evening. My name is Heather Stafford. I'm a taxpayer and parent of two former and one current Medina City School students. I wanted to address the board tonight, and thank you for making an excellent decision to do away with masks for the coming school year. I always think it's good to give credit where credit is due. Thank you for listening to the parents who spoke out and taking time into consideration, considering the information we previously shared. It is important that decisions like this are made and continue to be made at the local level. I cannot stress that enough, that they continue to be made here locally. But just because it's coming from Columbus or higher up does not mean that it's in the best interest of our children. My hope is that when the mask mandate comes back from Columbus in the future, that they are never considered again in this district. As has been stated previously, they are dangerous and they do not help with anything for our kids. There is no way, shape, or form, they are in no way, shape, or form good for our children. So I thank you so much for this decision, and I look forward to keeping tabs on what's going on in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. So Greg, you had a small checkmark, and then you had a no. So I think, I think, okay, all right. All right, next we have Erin Wertz.
Erin Wertz, 3233 Hamlin Road, Medina Township. I'm here to talk today a little bit about mistakes. I was a school teacher. Taught high school chemistry and physics for two years. And I always prefaced with my students, mistakes are opportunities to learn. I would say that this year has been fraught with mistakes. Mistakes by the board, mistakes by our superintendent, mistakes by our Board of Education, Board of Health, Governor. How do we overcome these mistakes when we need to learn? What will we learn from this? You say sunset this. That shouldn't be the choice of words for this today. We shouldn't sunset, we shouldn't forget, we shouldn't delete what happened this last year. We should learn from it. And as an educator, learning is challenging our schema, our way of thinking, our way of seeing the world for what it is. But that can't happen if we don't have good information. We always talk about what outcomes we want for our students this year. We want them to think critically, but we haven't really given them those skills. As an educator, I saw it every single day. Students couldn't think for themselves. They couldn't. Well, it comes from incorporating new information. It comes from also challenging where that information comes from. Is it a credible source? Is our governor a credible source? Is the CDC? Is Health and Human Services? Is the Health Department a credible source? We have a vaccine out there right now that's under an emergency use authorization. Authority to allow the use of unapproved medical products or unapproved uses or approved medical products to diagnose, treat, or prevent serious or life-threatening diseases when certain criteria is met, including that there are no adequate approved or available alternatives. Think to yourself, we've heard of other alternatives, yet we've been pushed an emergency use authorization using the mask or a vaccine. I want you to think for yourselves. What's a credible source? I need you to think that every time you make a decision as a board member or as a superintendent. Where am I getting my information from? CNN, Fox News? I've even found websites, a really awesome one, it's probably founded by Pfizer, but it's very well health. It's got articles on it. And guess what? They're all fact-checked. But does fact-checked mean that it's a credible source? So this school year, I wish, and I just ask you, when you make your decisions. I'm going to continue speaking, Mr. Skidmore.
Karen Wertz is next. Karen is next.
I have a constitutional right of free speech.
We have rules, and we're allowed to have rules.
And you just told me they were guidelines.
Next.
So, yes, Mr. Skidmore, I want to remind you.
Cut the mic, go to the next speaker.
I have a right, I have a voice, just like all these people here.
That's fine. You were able to exercise your right. We're glad you were. Thank you. Karen Wertz, welcome.
Hi. My name is Karen Wertz. I'm the mother of three, all former Medina City School students. I'm also a United States Air Force veteran who worked as a Russian linguist and a logistics officer. I hold a master's degree in education. I'm an author and a small business owner. While I should have just stopped at saying I'm a mother, some people don't find that impressive, but it's what I'm the most proud of. Back in March, when schools shut down, I had to teach my children, and I saw the way they were being taught, the confusion in math. My daughter thought she was horrible at math. I taught her a new way. Well, Mom, maybe I'm good at math. Yes, you are. I don't understand why we do certain things the way we do them. We seem to make things harder for students. When I picked up their stuff at the end of the year in garbage bags, I saw the shocking state of their work. It was nothing like the samples I was shown at parent-teacher conferences. I compared it to my third-grade writing journal that my mom had kept, and I wasn't off-base in imagining where she should be at this point. So I decided to homeschool, especially when I saw that masks were going to be forced and social distancing. The decision was easy. My children's grade, my children grades three through 10 all learned at accelerated rates. They caught up, and now they're beyond where they should be. They can all write in cursive, they can all speak a second language. They are taking more than one subject, ones even writing a book. Not only did their skills and knowledge improve, but their sibling bonds became stronger. Our family bonds became stronger. More and more mothers are going to grow weary of the stunts that are being pulled. The masks, the looking around, and oh, is it called 1619? I'm not sure. We all know, we know the buzzwords. We don't want hate in our school. We want equality. We love our neighbors. That's one of the greatest things about Medina. We love each other. The kids on Meet the Teacher Day, they don't decide who to sit by because of their skin. They love each other. They already do. Our roles as mothers do not need to be diminished. You should be grateful that we send our children to you. They are going to be fantastic Americans if we work together. But you don't slide in buzzwords and hate. I studied propaganda in the Air Force when I was a Russian linguist. I see what's going on. And I know you say to reach out to our legislators, but I guarantee you, most of the people in this room have Mark Roman Chuck, Sharon Ray, and Daryl Kick in our cell phones.
Time.
Thank you so much.
All right, Karen. All right, I have Mike, it looks like Changini, C-H-A-N-G-E-N-I. I'm sorry if I'm not reading it correctly. Mike?
Mr. Skidmore and committee, I just want to remind that the purpose of the three minutes is so that we can get through everyone, and that everyone who's signed up that wants to speak has the time to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Changiri. I live in the fine city of Brooklyn, Ohio. I came down here. I came down here to mainly speak to the audience, but to warn all the school board members that the plan that they're implementing according to the portrait of a bee here is called the portrait of a hurricane up north, and every school district across the nation has the same portrait that you're putting out on the same plat layout. When you talked about diversity and inclusion in the 1619 and the critical race theory, if you listen to God and religious leaders, which we don't do that in our schools anymore, which we need to bring back, it's all about what they're pushing as hate. The critical race theory divides people and it is not something that is healthy for our children to experience. Coming from a generation, I was involved in the 1965, I don't look that old, but I am, the 72 Segregation Act, when Judge Pinkney decided to come through and make our fine city in Brooklyn segregate. Guess what? You know how we stopped it? Mayor Coin said, "We don't take federal money, we don't take state money, we don't take county money. We fund our own schools because it's called local control," and had them escorted out of the city in 1972. Now I want to get to the education. All of this stuff that you're talking about is already en-codified in the 1965 ESSA. I hope you guys have heard of it. Basically, there's a bunch of, it's 500 pages, it's kind of a heavy read. I read half of it while I was sitting here. All you need to do is read that, it covers diversity, which they called racism back in our day. All of the money, it has equations in there to compare disabled children with non-disabled children, disadvantaged with disadvantaged, and this was written and passed into law in 1965. Also, you have the 1968 Civil Rights Act. God bless Martin Luther King for doing what he did, or none of us would be sitting here. In conclusion, I just want to warn all the parents behind me that if you guys are sincere about educating students, go back to local control. I do this in my school up north, they are not open. They do not allow public hearings. And that happened because of now, it's called the uncertainty of the times. Mark my word, you guys are all going to get a phone call from your state person that you respond to at the Educational Services Center, and they're going to say, "We have uncertainty of the times, we're canceling our Memorial Day ceremony, by the way I put on as a family because our city canceled it." So I'm just warning everyone down here in Medina County that the state, since you are taking the federal money and you are taking the state money, you need to tighten your bootstraps and go back to what you can pay for out of your community. I'm done, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, God bless you all.
Alright, I have a Julie SEMN. Julie?
Hi, my name is Julie Sems. I live in Medina Township. I am an RM, for most importantly, I am a mother of four kids. My oldest was senior this year. May 22nd of this year was graduation. Thirteen years of waiting for this monumental moment, so much excitement as my family and I stood outside in line for about 30 minutes. Only this moment was marred by the fact that we were being yelled at right at the ticket booth entrance by staff who wasn't wearing masks to put our masks on. Let me repeat this, we were yelled at to put our masks on by staff who was not wearing masks to an outside event. The woman at the ticket booth screamed at my husband. She refused to tear our tickets. My eight-year-old son, standing there, holding out his ticket to see his big sister graduate from high school, and she refused to tear off his ticket stub. She just stood there continuing to yell. As we walked forward, it was amazing to see hundreds of people coming to see students graduate, all without masks on, sitting sardine together on the stands. Do you see the ridiculousness of the situation? It defies logic. If that wasn't enough, once we caught up with our graduate, she told me of her experience of walking into the building. She came without a mask on, she has severe seasonal allergies, and that morning her eyes were puffy, itching, and she was having a hard time breathing, and so she wasn't going to put her mask on because honestly, she was about to graduate. A teacher, who I will not name here even though I want to, yelled and berated her for not wearing a mask. Another teacher came by and asked my daughter, "Just hold the mask up to your face." She did reluctantly, and the other teacher stopped yelling. Do you again see the ridiculousness? She wasn't even wearing it, she simply held it up to her face. And the teacher who yelled at her said, "I'm just following the rules." Another teacher, whom I will be forever grateful for, walked by and said, "Enough, we are not doing this and you may take your masks off if you wish." One sane voice out of how many? This wasn't about health, this was about control. The crazy part of all of this, it could have been prevented had you all had the courage to do what was right and allow for masks to be optional at the last board meeting, but you didn't. You decided to remain yes-men and yes-women to illogical orders that were given, that they're not even laws. They're not even laws. If you choose to implement these again during the upcoming fall/winter flu season, you will be sending a message out that you do not care about parental rights. These are our kids, and they have suffered enough and needlessly over the last school year. Let's not repeat the travesty of this past year to another school year. If you care so much about their mental, physical, and emotional health, you will allow normalcy to remain and parents decide what is best for their kids.
Thank you. Sheri Reeser?
I'm a 30-year resident of Medina County. I don't have any children or grandchildren in the school system. One of my greatest accomplishments, I believe, is that I homeschooled all four of my children through high school, and they're amazing citizens and accomplishing a lot of great things. What I'd like to talk about, let me find it. I'm glad to hear that you guys have dropped the mask mandates, which is not a law, it's just a suggestion in my opinion. Here's a list of germs found on six freshly washed and cleaned masks after being worn to school for a day, one day. Five kids, one adult. Other clean masks plus a t-shirt used for control tests had none of the germs on them. Half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia-causing bacteria. One-third were contaminated with one or more strains of meningitis-causing bacteria, and one-third were contaminated with dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. They also found the bacteria that causes tuberculosis. I don't know the amount of bacteria that had grown, but it is disconcerting to say the least, to have these bacterias growing in something that people keep close to their noses and mouths, breeze through and touch for easily access to the lungs and nasal passages. It is also disconcerting that all these things were found in as little as six masks. What else may be growing in masks and how common are the various things? And what about masks that aren't washed each day or change every time they're touched? Streptococcus pneumoniae, Mycobacterium, Nicerium meningitis, and the list goes on and on and on. Escherichia coli, which is E. coli. I would hope in the future that if masks are an issue, that you would give the students a choice, not a mandate, because that is not a law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one, I think it's a person that lives at Lake Forest. I can't read the name, might be McFann. It's kind of, it's like my signature, it's hard to read, it's similar. So, I don't know, is that person here, lives on Lake Forest, McFann? The person ahead of them was a Millie, it looks like they have marked the same address with two lines, maybe it's not. So, we'll come back. Oh, he did leave? I gotcha, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry Molly. Next one I have is Mr. Ty Stalursky.
Hello, I'm a recent graduate from Medina City Schools, the senior high school here. I was the only student in the whole entire high school that did not wear a mask for the back half of the year. I'm still here, I'm living, and I'm glad that I made the decision not to wear one. During my time as a student here, as my back half of my senior year, I was put into the back of a classroom and I had to sit far away from my peers, and I was not in, I was not able to engage in group settings, and I had to do everything on my own. I just ask that, I mean, I'm happy that you guys have gotten rid of the mask mandate, and I hope that you do not bring masks back to the school. It was just, it was very detrimental to me, not being able to work with my peers. I saw around the school, in the cafeteria, as I was eating with my friends, there was a young girl a couple tables away that she was, she was too scared to take her mask off to eat. I mean, it's just, the masks have done so much to students my age in Medina School, and I just hope that if mask mandates are brought back into the school, I just ask that you just get rid of them. I mean, masks, we don't need them, and if masks aren't the issue and it's vaccinated versus unvaccinated, I just ask that you don't put the unvaccinated kids in the back of the room like you did with me when I did not wear a mask. It messed with me emotionally, I mean, if I had to do a full year like that, I really don't know what would have happened. I mean, it was, it was really rough not being able to talk and converse with my peers.
Okay, thank you. The next one I have is Francesca Abramwitz. I should have it right after last month, but I still probably didn't.
I'd like to request 10 extra seconds from Heather Stafford because she certainly did use it. My name is Francesca Abramczak. I live at 6104 Triple Crown Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am here not only on behalf of my two children, but for the hundreds of parents that support our views on parental informed consent and parental choice whether to mask or vaccinate our children in the future. As of this afternoon, we had 744 online petition signers, which I have emailed to you, and in addition to that, I have roughly 80 more signatures here, which I will give to you. We elected you to this board to serve our community and our children. We did not elect you to play doctor with our children and their health. You are not medical professionals and therefore you have unlawfully practiced medicine by prescribing, recommending, and coercing and promoting enticements to instill mask-wearing and promoting the COVID vaccine, which is actually gene therapy. All treatments being marketed as COVID-19 vaccines are still in Phase III clinical trials until 2023, 2024, and hence qualify as medical experiments. People taking these treatments are enrolled in clinical trials. Since an emergency use authorization means the products are investigational and experimental only, products approved by emergency use are prohibited from being mandated by federal law. Federal Law 21 USC 360 BBB-3. An additional, in addition, must consent to the use of experimental products. Individuals to whom the product is administered are informed of the option to accept or refuse the product. There have been more deaths from the COVID-19 vaccine as reported by VARs, the CDC website for adverse reporting, than deaths in the last 20 years from all vaccines combined. As of June 25th, there have been over 6,000 deaths. Injuries to children between age 12 and 17 surpass 11,000, including nine deaths. Also, this is your notice that if you should require unvaccinated students to wear a mask, you will be violating the 1964 Public Law 88-352, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. You will also be violating the GINA Act, Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act. Genetic discrimination is the circumstance in which somebody's DNA is being used against them in various settings, including schools. You will be in violation of GINA against anyone you require to wear a mask because of their decision not to take an experimental vaccine. This is also in violation of HIPAA laws if that person doesn't sign a release form granting you permission to know their medical information. The engagement of...
Time. Really? Oh, wow. Okay, will anybody give me their time?
Thank you. The engagement of medical experimentation without informed consent further constitutes the indictable offense of crimes against humanity. The Nuremberg Code prohibits forcing or coercing anyone under any circumstance to participate in medical experiments, and the code states that the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This includes masks, testing, and vaccines. Thank you.
Please go ahead and email that to us if you'd like, and we'll have it for our files. Our rules call for 30 minutes for public comment, we've hit that point, a little over that. I, I will entertain maybe one or two others that didn't sign up, we did everybody that signed up. If you want to state your name and do that, I... Okay, come on up. Go ahead. Please come up to the mic and speak and state your name.
Well, I just want to remind you that those are rules and you are violating constitutional rights, and yet we still maintain some sort of civility with you guys.
Okay.
So I just also wanted, I wanted to point out some just observations that I made. Last time I was here, everyone wore a mask, and nobody had a mask on today. But I do notice that you're wearing a Nike shirt. Did you know that Nike said that, it is a brand, the CEO of Nike said, "It is a brand that is of China and for China." So I just thought that was interesting that you didn't wear the mask today, but you are wearing a Nike shirt. I just wanted to point that out. Another, because it reminded me of something that you said last time I was here as well, which was just last month. You said, you said you don't feel comfortable telling an individual that they, that they have to wear a mask. So you were saying that your teachers...
I'm sorry, if you could please address to the whole board if you would, we have rules about calling out individuals. If you could address the board as a whole, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Okay, well, I didn't mention anyone's name.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
Did I? I did not mention anyone's name.
You said you said that, okay.
I think, I think Mr. Sable knows I am talking about him, but I didn't mention his name.
Well, you have now, okay. So please, address it to the board.
You brought it up. So, you had said you were not comfortable with telling teachers that they didn't, that they, wearing a mask was optional because the students had to wear one. So I just thought it was funny that you would say that you wouldn't feel comfortable telling the teacher they don't have to wear one, but you're okay telling the students they would wear one. So I, that was just an observation that I made last time I was here, and I just wanted to point it out. The main reason I wanted to come today was because, to speak, was because I am an aunt of a, I have a, that is, she suffered from gender dysphoria. And she came home from school and she wanted to be addressed as a male, as he, we needed to address a girl as he, and I now have to refer to her. If I don't do these, I risk losing, not wanting to talk to me. My sister as well is, is doing these things as well, calling, she's afraid that she's going to leave. So I was wondering if you guys are aware of this kind of stuff happening? It's happening in the schools where kids are kind of encouraged to, with this gender dysphoria, to go in that direction, and from what I understand, the parent, the teachers and the administration of the school, I don't know, because I don't work at a school, so I was just wondering if I'm familiar with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about not having you, I missed the sheet of paper that was passed around. So I see another one here for an M. Rains on Foot Road. M. Rains. And I think this is our last one here, M. Rains. Foot Road, 4544 Foot Road. We've gone, we exceeded our time, I said, I said I would... I said, I said I would do two more. How about two more? You're the first. Come on up. Please state your name. We'll have another opportunity next month with our regular board meeting where we'll have public comment for others.
Thank you. My name is Bob Abramczek. I'm the husband of Francesca Abramczek, who started and was cut off. So I'm just going to continue on where she left off. The engagement of medical experimentation without informed consent further constitutes the indictable offenses of crimes against humanity. The Nuremberg Code prohibits forcing or coercing anyone under any circumstances to participate in medical experiments, and the code states, quote, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential." Any coercion or pressure tactics used for students to be vaccinated contra, contrave...
Contravenes.
Contravenes the Nuremberg Code, the Helsinki Declaration. In short, it is universally established by all reputable governments, NGOs, organizations, policy leaders, and physicians for many decades that it is absolutely forbidden to coerce or influence, let alone force, any human being to take any experimental medical treatment, and that fully informed consent is absolutely mandatory. We hereby notify all school staff, school board members, and executives, and any other adults who may have access to your children while under their care. This includes the assistance of outside school staff or contractors such as public health nurses or health officials. They and you will be held personally and criminally liable for any injuries or deaths that may occur. The World Health Organization latest guidelines clarifying who should get the COVID vaccine states, quote, from their website, "Children should not be vaccinated for the moment." According to the WHO website, quote, "There is not yet enough evidence on the use of vaccines against COVID-19 in children to make recommendations for children to be vaccinated against COVID-19. Children and adolescents tend to have milder disease compared to adults," end quote. If there is a persistence of this type of attack on our children's freedoms in the future, I will have no choice but to contact my human rights attorney, Lee Dundas, and we will not lose. We, of course, do not want to go this route. We understand that this has been a difficult and trying time for all. We know that deep down, you don't want to hurt our children, but unfortunately, many children have been hurt by these ridiculous mandates. We need this board to listen to our concerns and understand parents' and legal guardians' concerns, and to respect our personal decisions on masks, future testing of any kind, and experimental vaccines with regard to our children. This, as this is our U.S. constitutional right to life, freedom, health, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. One more speaker. If there's one more that did not sign up, we'll go ahead and do that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jill Machalski. I live at 6101 Triple Crown Drive in Montville Township. I'm not prepared today. I wasn't going to speak, but one of the things I haven't heard anybody speak about today, except the parents behind me, is the mental health of our children. Both my sons are out of school now. They are in college, and I'm fighting the college fight. And yes, I write my representatives every other day, emails to my senators, to my House Health Committee. I'm tired of writing letters, but I will do it for my children. But what you're not understanding is my, my oldest son is on the autism spectrum. So having a mask over his face has been, this past year, very trying for me and for him. He socializes and communicates based on facial expressions, which most of our children do as well. So I'm actually kind of tired of hearing about everybody else's physical health without considering my son's mental health. And the mental health of our children is so important. And if you, I know you've eliminated the mask mandate, but I hear you say, "We anticipate that to continue based on what the governor says." And I honestly don't care what the governor says. This is my choice, our parents' choice. Think about the health and mental health of our children, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We're moving on to executive session. I would make a motion that we go to executive session to consider the employment compensation of a public employee or official for preparation for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, unless there's any other reasons that the board would like us to do that. Is that good, the reasons?
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We have a second. And who will be coming in with us tonight? And then we'll vote.
Dr. Waller and Mr. Stevens.
Thank you very much. If you could please call roll.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.